I'll call the September 8, 2015 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. It is 5:09 PM. We do have a quorum. And first item on the agenda is closed session. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. You've got them.
I got what I'm gonna say from. (laughing). I go ahead and move that With County convene in a closed meeting to discuss the county administrator position and also to meet with legal counsel about potential contract litigation and potential contract collection litigation with EvaTran pursuant to the exemptions found in the Virginia Code 2.2-3711A. That would be Sections 1 and Section 7.
Have a second for motion going closed session. Any discussion? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes, six with one absent. We are now in closed session. I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
Have a second on the resolution. Second, any discussion? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We're out of closed session and we'll be in recess until 7:00 PM. We was in recess from a 5 o'clock closed session. I don't see Jim Turnell from Baker's Chapel. I'm gonna ask Reverend Gary Hausman. Dr. Gary Hausman.
Like whatever.
Decide the implication and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we are thankful that we can gather here tonight to go about the business of the county. Father, we pray that as we go through this meeting and through our deliberations, that everything that we do will honor you and will help the citizens of our community. Father, give us courage and the discernment and the cooperation and a heart of forgiveness and a heart of love as we transport through this meeting and through all the business that we have to do. We ask it all in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note for the record, we have a quorum. We have some business to take care of before we get into the agenda concerning our closed meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we terminate the employment of Alan Lamberson effective September 3rd.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Mr. Dalton, for our discussion, you wanna?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, based off the action, I would offer, if the board so deems fit, that I would continue as county administrator upon a couple of conditions. One condition, pass a comprehensive fiscal exam to prove that I'm capable of sustaining the rigour shown in stress of the job. And the second, that the board, because your own rules of procedure last year and this year, you've accepted my resignation, and that that has to be brought up by the board to overturn those two acceptances and change the terms of the fact of original employment.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to extend Mr. Dalton to expense with his retirement for.
I'll make a motion that we go back to the terms of the employment agreement, remove the retirement date.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Okay, with that being taken care of, we have citizens' time. We'll go into our agenda. Maxine Waller has. Good seeing you, Ms. Maxine. We give you a name and address.
My name and address?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's Maxine Waller, and I live in Ivanhoe, Virginia, 24350, on 544 Painters Hill Road.
Thank you.
And I'm with the Ivanhoe Civic League. That's who I represent here tonight. I'm president of that organization.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right.
Or ready.
Well, I'm ready too. We have approached the board, we would like $10,000. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we have a committee put together that we'd like to have a really large gospel singing at Fort Chiswell High School in the spring of 2016. This singing would benefit the school as well as us, the high school band. Its tentative yet has said that they would sell the food for the event, and we would take the profits from the singing and roll it back to more. We do a lot of community work, if you read my letter before, we do a lot of community work, and we work and support a lot of things that happen in the county. And I'm open for questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Maxine, would you mind telling all of the senior group this?
Well, I'll try. I can't believe I'm nervous, but I am. After all these years, why am I nervous?
I don't know if that means the rest of them are scary.[534.04][534.04](laughing).
Well, there ain't no woman up here, for one thing. We need to rectify that. I've got a lot of opinions about a lot of things, y'all know that. The Civic League holds an annual Christmas party each year, and we do about 50 children, and we feed, we fix food boxes for about 250 families. That's all free to everybody, and we do not do it by economics. So if you're working, you can still get a food box, but we primarily think about the senior citizens and make sure that they get a lot of soup, a lot of fruits, a lot of vegetables. We set the boxes up that way. And we cheat. If we find out a family needs something, then we provide it. If kids need clothes and need a size 10 Slim, then somehow they tie a size 10 Slim in his package. And we work with the county sheriff's department in working with community time citizens that have committed a crime and need to do community hours. We, first thing they do is pick up trash on one of the state roads there in Ivanhoe. And we have, do go out as far as the Piney section. We have, we work with New River Valley Correctional Center, working with the trustees. We, what is we doing? I was looking to see if my friend come in, but she didn't.
Y'all do it.
Oh, we have all kinds of parties for the kids. All year long, we have parties for the kids, and it's all free. And they all come, and they have a great time. And they eat. At other times, we're available for anybody that has a need. We have a college volunteer program where we bring students from all over the world, including Russia and Japan, and they come and help us fix people's houses, clean the senior citizens' homes. Anytime we have students, they clean citizen, senior citizens' homes, and they love it. Have kids in their house, they love it. And right now, I can't think of anything else. I mean, there's more, but I don't, I don't have it written down in front of me. I got my notes from the gospel singing, and I've talked with the principal at the school, and we've got tentative dates. I talked to Ron, no, Guy Penderott, and I've talked with the Gaethers, I've talked with the singing cook family, the singing Spencer's. So anyway, we're really working on the singing, I mean, on the singing.
I'd say, how much do you have in your treasury now?
Treasury right now? You really don't want to know.[733.51][733.51](laughing). We have $358. And the reason we only have $358 is because every time we get a dime, we spend it. And everybody said, "We'll save you money." That's not what a nonprofit's for. We're not holding on to money, we're helping people, and we're spending our money as we get it. And right now, the reason, one of the reasons we've come before you all tonight is that in Ivanhoe and in the Fort Chiswell area, there's only so many people can have car washes and hot dog sales, and there's churches, like Ivanhoe has seven churches, and they're always having a hot dog sale. And then you've got the Odvilles, and you've got the fire department. Fire department has something about every weekend, and it's just harder and harder and harder. And we, if you sell a hot dog, you buy a hot dog. So it ends up the same money falling over, so.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I like how she explains about the money keep falling over, because I've thought that many times with fire department stuff, you know. We'd been better off just giving them 20 bucks and not even done a fundraiser.
Yeah.
Do you have a, like a breakdown of how you're gonna spend the money?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
We're gonna spend $5,000 on the singing, and we're gonna spend the other $5,000 on support. We gotta have a computer. Our computer went to the bad. We gotta have a computer, and we need some administration money.
Can you put that in writing?
Yes, sir, I can. Yes, sir, I can.
Refer it to the budget committee for their next meeting, and we'll bring it up at the next, our next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Our next meeting.
Okay, I'll be here. And whatever y'all need, please, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. The Civic League owns their own building?
Yes, sir.
Do you have to keep that heated?
Yes, sir, heated. We've gotta have insurance for the singing, so there's quite a few things that's, you know, the things under the table that you don't know about, like heat, electricity.
You know, get all of that stuff together and writing and give it to Mr. Dalton.
Okay.
And I'll, he'll get it to the budget committee.
Okay. When does the budget committee meet?
The budget committee is, by what I see, yours September 17?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Okay, we'll get it to you right away.
Yeah.
Okay. And I guess I'm done.
Thank you.
And I thank y'all for letting me come before you. Next time, I won't be so nervous.[896.13][896.13](laughing).
No one else has signed up, but I see you guys come in. Would you like to address the board? Do you have anything? You just come visiting? Okay. Does anyone else in the gallery like to address the board? Hear none, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meetings for August 25th and August 31st. I entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Have a second. Second, the motion. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 25th and August 31st, 2015. Any discussion, any corrections or changes? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll leave him to pay the invoice.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Any invoice any board member would like to discuss? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving right along, old business. Mr. Dalton, anything on our old business?
Now, the only thing reported is closed on property damage that makes it 77. It's been recorded, paid for, your property.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you have any idea about, is a new ambulance been delivered yet for lead mines?
I do find out.
Okay. Okay, moving into new business. Withville Community College, Dr. Sprinkle, would you like to come up and address the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think just two or three minutes. I've met several of the folks here and had a warm welcome from all of you, just as we have for the whole community here since my wife and I joined the college here in July. The college enjoys an incredible reputation. I'm very proud and pleased to be selected to be the president of the college going forward. Now, just hit two or three highlights of things that are going on with your college, your community college right now. One of the big ones is we're undergoing reaffirmation and accreditation, and at the end of October, we'll have a team come on campus there and finish up things, so we're working diligently on that. There's been, as y'all know, being local here, there's a lot of transition going on at the college. Charlie White heading out as president, and somebody said, "Was I gonna try and fill his shoes?" And I, you know, I'm wiser than that. I may try and follow in his footsteps, but I don't think anybody can fill Charlie's shoes, for sure. But we do have a lot of transition going on at our college right now. We've got a change in the leadership. We've got two new deans. We've got a new vice president of instruction and student services. We've got a position for a workforce development person who will be filling that soon, hopefully, and that's very important to our community. As you know, we want to work with our workforce development and economic development folks in the community. Certainly want to continue the good work that, the groundwork that's been laid for the dual enrollment and the opportunities that that affords many of our youth who otherwise might not be able to attend college. And one of the things that's really big for Withville Community College right now, I've just been astounded at the percentage, the high percentage of online courses that we deliver, so we're really gonna focus a lot on making sure that those are quality in the delivery of that. So just hitting some of those highlights, Mr. Chairman, I would entertain any questions if you have any, but the last thing I'll say is we're just tickled to death of being here. We've settled over at Rural Retreat, but love the whole area here. It's gorgeous.
Well, I'd like to welcome you to With County and glad you're here. Does anybody have any questions?
No. If you'd gone another mile, he'd have said Cedar Springs.
(laughing). That's true. We are just on the cusp.
That's a nice community up there.
We've been very welcome.
I'd like you to enjoy it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
About workforce development, Dr. Sprinkle. Last week, I met with Dr. Perry. I don't know whether you've talked to him since or not, but we're in dire need of a robust training program and hopefully can work with revamping high school vocational to give college credit like they do in so many academic courses, and then get their finishing with you guys and have them work ready for industry.
Yes, sir.
We've got to build an educated workforce to fill out the total picture for economic development in the county. And any way the board can help, also, I hope you can reach out to New River and see if they can be part of it as a regional concept, because they've got such good, long-serving programs down there that have international representation, and I know you guys can work together.
Right.
And if we can include the public school system in some way, it seems like to me we can produce a finished product more economically and quicker, and we really need it quicker instead of a long time in planning.
Right. If I may, I'll add just a couple more comments based on that question. I think you're absolutely right. I think if you look at what the, we hear that term skills gap, and that's what the employers say they need, and the statistics or the description that I've seen and read is that for every graduate or professional degree, you need two bachelor's levels and seven folks who have something post-high school. It's probably more like an associate's degree. There's a number of challenges with that. One of those challenges has to do with another gap, and that's referred to as the interest gap. A lot of our students in the schools aren't aware of the quality of these jobs, the good living ways that you can get, and we've got to work with our school partners and help them get a better understanding of that. The systems are different a little bit in North Carolina and Virginia. The school, the college that I came from, we had a very strong partnership working with our school systems. I'm talking with Dr. Lori Huffer, and I've talked with some of the superintendents in our service area, and I think that's what it's gonna take for us, is we're gonna have to collaborate and work together. We work closely with Virginia Highlands, and I know we do have a good working relationship with New River as well, so it is about partnerships and collaboration. An area like ours, at Carroll, we can't do things a lot of the times on our own. We have to collaborate and work together to be successful.
You know, we have a great transportation system here, similar to what you had in North Carolina, that we're lined up to be able to transport students and faculty. And you mentioned accreditation. Does that necessarily have to slow down getting started on planning this and planning to imp, I know your plate's full, but can we at least start talking about it?
We are talking about it, but I will, just to be transparent and honest, nothing takes precedence over getting that school accredited. If we lose our accreditation, nobody wins.
Right.
That is job one right now.
I understand.
For our school. Anybody else have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and we'll work together on this.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Building and Grounds Committee.
Stephen, can you give back when you were wanting to bring it to us, and I haven't pulled it up?
Economic Development Board.
Yeah, it's got Building and Grounds on the agenda.
Oh, on the roofing? Yeah. Yeah, basically, the Buildings and Grounds meeting, Mr. Bowers brought in the copy of the warranty for the roof on the, the new roof on the old courthouse down there. Mr. Hale reviewed it, and there was a recommendation from Mr. Hale. I don't know if you want to repeat your recommendation, but basically, the contractor confirmed that they built it to the specifications that were there, and that the roof manufacturer confirmed that they agree with that, with the right specifications, and get both of those letters on file to help strengthen our warranty on that roof.
Yeah, I'd like to explain why. That courthouse created a need for some details that weren't in their normal design manual. So we were shown the specialty details that were used on this job, and what I ask is that those details be covered and attached to the warranty contract, so if something comes up five years down the road, nobody remembers what happened. But if it's attached to the warranty, then everybody's agreed that that warranty covers these special details.
Maxine, anything we need to vote on?
I do not know of any action that you all need to take at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Economic Development Committee.
Economic Development Committee met on September 3rd. We're recommending adopting the attached resolution in your board packet regarding House Bill 2 of three projects we feel are worthy of consideration, also in that order.
Okay, coming from the committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Anything else from the Economic Development Committee?
That's it.
That's it. Rescue Squad Assistance Fund.
Mr. Chairman, I have a letter from Mr. Kinsler. Came down late last week. The Fire and Rescue Committee needs Monday. Is this coming?
Uh, yes, sir. 14.
And I would ask that the full board authorize the Fire and Rescue Committee to re-discuss this request from Mr. Kinsler. So I feel it's strong enough that we can apply for this and allow them to let us move forward with making an application, knowing that there will be additional funding, complete all the radio system for vehicles and personnel and rescue squads in the county.
Okay, you've heard the request from the county administrator, his recommendation. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. Second, any discussion? Hear none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Just for quick clarification, the Fire and Rescue is usually third Monday. Do we need to make a special meeting on Monday?
It's gotta be this Monday.
What time?
Well, I had it down for Monday.
I didn't write it was.
Well, I'm sorry, because that Tuesday starts the third week. I mean, you know, like the water committee is the third, so I apologize, but yeah, if we can meet on Monday, the 14th.
I'll find it here. Okay, inform everybody on the Fire and Rescue Committee, the meeting is rescheduled for September the 14th instead of September the 21st.
Right.
At 8:00 AM. Okay, next item on the agenda is other. Mr. Dalton, does any other business spring forth to the board?
There is. Originally scheduled, I wanted to rather talk about my own need to file our employees. It's gonna come out my bucket. Lunch on Friday, I have a little picnic, and I guess based off of past circumstances, it'd be sort of a remolding or bonding opportunity, of course, if any of y'all in the county would come and play with us around 12:30, 1:00 clock, Friday afternoon. You're welcome to show up.
Okay. So motivational lunch Friday?
Motivational lunch Friday. Okay. Is anything else, Mr. Dalton? Does any board member have anything to bring forth to the board at this time?
I've got another.
Okay.
Mr. Dalton, would it be appropriate, I went over the airport report. Would it be appropriate to ask them, since obviously pilots can't write, to give us a summary of airport activity? A summary would look like local flights, corporate visits, military visits. Just give us a number that would be taken from these activities that I can't understand. And if anybody can understand them and read them, I'd like to know about it, but it's, I think it would not be unusual to ask for a legible summary of activities. That was an informal question. Can we do that as a provider?
We will do it tomorrow morning. We do it tonight.
One thing about the airports, the singing up the sheets, they're having a flying. I think this is coming weekend?
It's the? I thought it was the nineteenth. Eighteenth.
It is nineteenth, I think.
I'm pretty sure it's the nineteenth.
Saturday, two weeks.
Yeah. Mr. Dalton, you know, they're going to repave the runway in 2016. Have we appropriated that money in this year's budget, or we'll need to do that in next year's budget?
Actually, I went to the airport last week and asked them to, for three things. One was the actual appropriation of the meats of the four member entities. The second thing is how much money was appropriated by each member of the entity based off the request of operation. And finally, what is the appropriation necessary for this runway project and when is the schedule? I understand two entities appropriated money for, two entities cut their funding on their operations side. But by agreement, there's a certain funding formula that we're all supposed to follow on both operations and construction.
So it's, it's not, they don't, in my opinion, we shouldn't need to divvy it up equally and all four entities pay.
And the Air Force mission has got a grant from the state of Virginia. The local share of the construction project is three-hundred-and-some thousand, short-term loan, zero percent debt or something. But we will, we will get all that together. We attended, the airport manager, I met with him and Mr. Pennington, the chairman, and I asked for that last week.
Anything else?
This, I see you're, we're having a tire collection day?
We are.
Oh, how, everybody will find out, we're going to put notes in there.
We're going to be handing out flyers at the convenience center. We should be advertising on the radio and the newspaper here shortly. Not only have that, but we also have household hazardous waste day coming up.
I didn't see it in anything.
We were printing the brochures on that today. That's conducted by the Joint Public Service Authority. And that's in two weeks, two Saturdays?
Twenty-six weeks.
So, but we will be advertising most of those calls and put the brochures out. The only difference in this year's tire collection day, you've got to call for an appointment. So everybody got to shuttle up at the same time.
Are they going to take tractor tires, too?
They are. We've got a grant from Farm Bureau bringing the trailer in only for implement tire, tire truck farm equipment. So that's being paid by Farm Bureau.
Is it anybody can bring tractor tires, or just Farm Bureau members?
Anybody.
Okay.
We've got a truck there, and our guys are loading them. If there's tractor tires, show up. Farm Bureau's the tire guy, they can surely welcome doing it.
Okay.
They have a dinner for them.
I was just thinking in the past it'd have been that way, and I wanted to make sure that I wasn't wrong.
Don't have a tractor tire, but if I showed up, I'd be disappointed if it didn't take.
Have you had time to look for some trash van? Any?
I spoke with the sheriff about it last week. And he indicated that he had a website, and what he had looked at so far was not within the price range of what we were looking at. I have not gotten the website from him yet, but he has indicated he's helping us look for something in the price range there.
Okay. And I hope you feel better, Stephen. You sound like you've crooked up.
Stephen, I thought when, when he was here and talked to us, he had one with a price on it, and then we added a few dollars so it would be within the range.
I was not at that meeting, Mr. Hale, that's when I was gone. But Mr. Dalton asked me to get in touch with him, and I contacted the sheriff, and he indicated what was out there. And I don't remember exactly, but it was too large of a, of a truck or a freight for what we needed with the price that was out there. And he was trying to find something that met within that range of what was being looked at.
Okay.
What we did agree with the sheriff is that we are not going, probably not going to put a cage and stuff in the new van. It'd be a transportation van home.
Well, what does the district transportation, what do they do with their vans when they?
District Three?
Yeah, District Three, what do they do with theirs?
They put them out on surplus, but they don't have any right now, because I've done checks with them. And they won't, they had one, but they send it to a shop, and it was, it would cost too much to fix it for us to buy.
This is what we'll do, Joe. Stephen, if you could call General Services and Lauren here and ask if he can look for one besides what the sheriff's doing. We'll get down on the federal website, too. That way we can do that.
Well, a short bus, if it was in good shape, would do the job for us.
Mr. Schumay down at General Services, if he can, I've talked to him on several meetings before, he can help us locate anything that will make this a fire.
Well, we really need to expedite that, because it's getting worse by the day with no activity on trash picking.
I'll call him in the morning.
Okay.
Now, I, I have a question. You all said hazardous waste, and you were talking about Sheriff's Department. And I, I had a, I almost forgot this. I had a lady call whose husband had passed away, who just had tremendous amount of medicine. And she wanted to know what to do with the medicine. I thought that the?
We have periodically, we have complained to Social Services and Health Department and Sheriff's Office. There's a drug?
Collection day.
Collection day. And we'll find that out. But I think there's one coming up here this fall.
Well, if we can, you know, do that and advertise it, because, I mean, she was, I appreciate your calling. But, you know, there are all people out there that, that do have all that leftover medicine, and we don't want them flushing it down the, you know, to get into the water table. So, okay. Well, if we can find that out and advertise it, that'd be great.
The Southwest has a Southwest Road Coalition group that meets on a monthly basis and deals with those issues and schedules. I'll send them an email.
And ask them when? Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I, I just happened to think about that when you said hazardous waste and the police.
Well, it's a good thing we have us sat down, we can think of everything we forgot during the week. Well, here and nothing else, declare adjourned.